There you are live, sir.
All right. It's called order here. Yes, we just need to prove the minutes. Is everybody read the minutes from? Last meeting?
I know.
Just need a motion that they read the minutes and.
I like the motion.
Second. No in favor? Going to do some old business first, you want on?
Yeah. Just so you all will look at.
I have the Titan fuel if that's what you're looking.
You got the tight fuel? All right.
You understand it?
All right, Titan sales. Our fuel sales for this fiscal year are five thousand seven hundred eighty-seven gallons of avgas or one hundred L L for a total of thirty-two thousand and ten dollars. And four thousand twenty gallons of jet for eighteen thousand and eighty-nine dollars. Total sales are fifty thousand and ninety-nine dollars for this fiscal year. That's July one through last Friday, last Thursday. For the quarter itself, avgas was eleven hundred and seventy-four gallons or fifty-eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and jet was a hundred and fifty-seven gallons and seven hundred and five dollars. Total of sixty-five hundred and seventy-four dollars for this past quarter. That's from our last meeting until last Thursday. Okay? So that was our sales as it stands right now. Let me go ahead and do the year-to-date budget tracking for a moment. Before we jump on the Ver Tower. That kind of follows up what we have here. On our budget tracking for the year or year-to-date as of Monday. Grants, we haven't been receiving any grants because a lot of it's been sitting on hold for the state and some of the stuff. We are moving forward. Or they are moving forward. We're not doing anything on it, but they're moving forward now on the acquisitions needed for the fence project. But they've actually finally gone to a third party to do the negotiating. So that that line item for grants is actually very low. We've reimbursed, been reimbursed for Hanson call thirty-three thousand dollars. Thirty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars was actually a reimbursement. We actually had the expense and it's been reimbursed by the state, so. But our interest year-to-date is already more than we had budgeted for the whole year. We had ten thousand budgeted as income. We are at seventeen thousand one thirty-nine currently. This time of the year, we expected to be at thirty-six thousand on rental income. We're at thirty-eight thousand three fifteen. Fuel sales, we expected to be thirty-seven thousand five hundred. We're at fifty-three thousand, almost five hundred fifty-three five. So revenues have been have been good. Expenditures have not been terrible. We actually have only spent a hundred and thirteen thousand out of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand where we should have been, or if we had everything going. Again, the whole, the the big savings on it, but that's not all of it. The biggest savings is the fact that we had a hundred and forty-nine thousand in there for the fence and none of that's being used. See here. So right now, we are actually we're a hundred and sixty-six five to the good. Take the fuel out, that brings it down to one thirty-two five. Take the T-hangers, the cost of those out, because those are independent. That's another twenty-six two. That brings us down to our actual operating costs of one oh six two ninety-one for the year. So. Not a bad, not bad.
Not bad at all.
Bad at all. So that's, that's where we are. Year, year-to-date. Burn Tower update. You've got a list of operations, I think that went out in your package, so you can see those. Shows you what we've had.
That was thrown.
For this year, we've had two thousand and seventy-seven operations, as they call it. This count for calendar year last year, twenty twenty-four, we had three thousand and sixty total operations. That was the calendar year. It's January one, December thirty-one. Our fiscal year, year-to-date, we're at two thousand and seventy-seven operations. So you should have that in your, again, in your bag. The one hundred low-lived water filtration system or basement system has been installed. It was installed just recently rebel installed it. It's the same system that they put on the D, on the jet. Yep. But they're doing the same thing now for avgas. Our A O P is moving forward, our, I'm sorry, I'm using acronyms. Our airport layout plan is moving forward with the, with the Fed, with FAA. We actually just got a letter in stating that they approved our aviation activity forecast. And you got a copy of that in your packet. So that, that's helping us move on with that.
Well, what's it saying?
We are small.
Yeah, just not.
A one, A one. They haven't bumped us up. That doesn't mean it can't change, but right now it's just a.
A one.
Yeah. A, A one being smaller grant. The city council last, last meeting I voted to engage or elected to engage Hanson in engineering on the hangar, new, the third hangar, new hangar. We have bipartisan infrastructure legislation monies that we need to start moving, moving. It started a couple of years back. You only have so many years before you start losing it. So they're, they're going to begin, begin the engineering net here, here toward me. So that's moving forward. Now, the thing we have from the state is that they have said that they will cover again the foundation. And we pay for the hangar. The I L money is to use primarily for the hangar. What is left over or not covered by either or would have to come out of the city, would have to either pay it out of their tax dollars or out of or get another loan on that. One way or the other, they could do that. Our tracking is, is really good because at this point we looked at the hangers and the way it is set up, we will owe eight hundred and ninety-three thousand on the hangers, the payback, total payback on the, on the twenty-five-year period. But the revenues off that will equate to a million eighty-six thousand. So that puts us about a hundred and ninety-three thousand in, in profit over the, over the lifetime of that loan. So that keeps us, and that money is, is set aside strictly for hangar and hangar repairs. So the same thing would happen if we go the other route.
On, on the state, they, they're going to pay for the pavement and the concrete.
That's, that's what they, that's what they have said they would do. We don't have that in writing, but that's what they said they would, they would do.
That was a big help.
Yes. At this point, I think that's kind of. I will pass this around for your view. You've probably seen this, but this is what they're looking at for the airport, for the fencing. Pass that around. And I'd like to have them back when you're done with it. For the states and negotiations. I'll take that. You want, want, Jason, you go on? So. But yeah.
So are we going to have to build that road around or?
The state will.
State will.
Yeah. That'll be part of the project.
Because they come off that farm road down.
That's what we say at this point, because again, we're, they're still in negotiations and I just wanted you guys to see what's going on with the project and what they're, what it's overall looking at. This is a safety area. There's no extension to the air, the airport runway itself. It's just meeting FAA safety standards. What it is.
Oh, my Lord.
That's just it. You didn't.
What do you say, John?
All right.
Okay. I sent you all an email today. There's several items going on in this. It's just kind of an up, update on what some, some stuff going on around the state. And so it's, you should have an email on it with everything on it. It talks about open skies, flight club, dream charter. They got an aviation camp coming up, aviation day coming up. So those are some things going on in the state. That actually covers all the old business. Unless you all have questions on what we've gone over, and I know it's kind of quick, but I'm trying to be concise and if you want me to elaborate on some things, I'd be glad to.
So this is about six hundred feet of extending the.
I can't say.
I just, I just scouted roughly. It looks like people's.
Yeah, I can't.
Trying to get it farther, the road farther away from the runway.
But it's not really a open road. It's, it's strictly mainly to get back over to that other easement over.
It's an access road.
Yeah, it's just a. He's pretty much the only one, the farmer, about the only one who will be using it.
If there's no, no questions, then I'm ready for new business if you also.
We're not in a moral business. We're just motioned accept the old business?
No, you don't have to do that.
My brain is.
You're, you're welcome either. Now, do you want to go into officer relations or save it to the last?
Make me no difference.
Well, I mean, it's either way. You, you can do that or we can split do, do the budget work and stuff if you want.
We can go the officers if you want to do it.
Your call, sir.
We'll just do the officers.
Any motions for chairman? Any, I'm, I'm sorry, any nominations for chairman? Nominations for chairman? Any nominee, would anyone here nominate the existing officers? Again?
I'll nominate the existing.
Yeah, there we go. Are there any other nominations? Would someone like to move it to nomination cease?
I'm sorry, so move.
All right, you get a second on that one?
Second.
All right.
Yes, I'll.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Great. You guys are buttons for punishment. Okay. We have budget, draft budget, but before we get to that, I want to talk to you about we have received starting back in twenty-two, we received two hundred thousand each biennial, which is, that's twice. We've received this, two hundred thousand dollars each biennial to help with general aviation airport operations. Never received that before. No guarantee we'll receive it again. That being said, it has basically covered our operational expenses since we started getting those grants. You have a printout where I think a biennial airport grant from Commonwealth Kentucky, do you see that? And I'll run through that. We received two hundred thousand. They actually just sent us the money back then. We will be applying a hundred and fifteen thousand nine thirty-one seventy-five for fiscal year airport operations for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. We had a carryover, we give us a carryover, eighty-four thousand sixty-eight dollar twenty-five cents applied to the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four last year. That was sixty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-two cents. Also with the carryover then of twenty-two, four. The proposed, we also have now another two hundred thousand grant, which we don't, they won't send it to us until we submit. It's a, you, you, you make, you make the payment and submit it, we'll reimburse. It's a reimbursement now. That being said, and I've talked with Mark Carter, the, the commissioner of the Kentucky Division of Aviation. This grant that we have can be utilized. Let me back up. Kentucky Aviation Association for years had been kind of just been there, just kind of hanging out, just kind of floating in the world. There's been a big change in it this past twelve months. They've re, redone it. We've got a whole new set of bylaws. We now have representation from across the state. We have set up, each region has three, generally three representatives in the western region. The manager from Hopkinsville, the manager from Sturgis and myself have been voted as the, the region representatives for this end of the Kentucky. I've also been appointed to the finance committee. We're working on that. One of the, one of the key factors, the key things that they're wanting to do is to create an executive director's position. Executive director would be a person that would be like so many of them. That's kind of a lobbyist for this, this, this association. But it's also the person that's going to help us continue to get these monies that we haven't received in the past and may, you know, and there's no guarantee we'll receive in the future. So this two hundred thousand is one of, one of the big things on our plate to keep that going, that every general aviation airport in the state of Kentucky, instead of receiving just certain amounts of money for specific projects, they're getting a flat two hundred thousand is what they have the last two biennials. They'll keep that going because a lot of these airports, that's the only money they've got. So, but the thing of it is, is it's a, it's a one-time buy-in to this, and it also helps solidify that position that will help, you know, work with legislation that would be good for aviation. And they're also going to be charged with finding ways to maintain their position. So in other words, they're going to have to figure out ways what are the, the new fees going to be down the road? What are the sponsorships going to be? What are the? You know, how do we make, you know, money off of our conferences and stuff like that? Because they got to fund themselves. Kentucky better, Kentucky is for better transportation, has probably got one of the best setups that I've seen. They do a phenomenal job. They're doing a great. The director actually has an associate assistant and they do a magnificent job. They've got just tons and tons of people that have been, that have come in and joined it. It's always effective in legislation for transportation, not just road and rail, but river and aviation. They do things as well, but they don't focus on any particular mode of transportation. The K A A or the Kentucky Aviation Association does focus on aviation. So. They have requested that each of the cities, each of the cities, each of the airports that receive these grants donate, not donate, pay a due, an in, in due of two hundred or twenty thousand dollars out of that to, to get this thing going. It's a one-time fee. It is eligible, it is an eligible fee. And that comes directly from the commissioner himself. He says, when we set this up, it was set up so that it would also be available to, to put that twenty thousand in there. My question to you is, is we've got the money from carryover. Is, would it be your recommendations that we also provide the twenty thousand as a buy-in? As a dues fee, whatever for Kentucky Aviation Association?
I think be dumb, be dumb not to.
Well, that's my thought too, because again, the city of Cal has, has reaped a great benefit from this simply because each year we've been able to, with this grant, we've been able to carry over and basically take care of all of our operational funding. Now, I'm not talking about grants and I'm not talking about proprietary. I'm talking about our out-of-pocket expenses. And this grant has been able to help, help us and it can keep the taxpayer from paying anything on a permanent basis instead. So if we can keep this going, or if they can keep this going, then that would be a great benefit.
Absolutely.
So I guess just if you all are if somebody would like to make a motion that you recommend that we, that we join at that amount, then we'll just take a consensus vote if you're.
Motion. Okay, that's ten percent of.
The twenty thousand for the K A A dues for, for Kentucky Dan Village State Airport.
State Park Airport.
I second that.
All in favor?
Okay. Thank you. All right, that in turn would again, still leave a balance forward of twenty-four hundred dollars to apply to the, the, this next biennial, which we're in right now, two hundred thousand. So this year, it looks like we're going to finish the year in looking at it. Let's actually go to the draft budget.
Twenty-four hundred dollars before you get the the next two hundred?
No. No, they actually, they gave us the two hundred thousand upfront of the first biennial. So the second biennial amount, they said, we're just going to do it reimbursed. Does that, did you not get one? You can share my mind and you can, here, give this to him and I'll share with him.
Yeah.
There you go. Here you go. They have that one and then I'll share with Asher. Okay. What you have here is this, this spreadsheet is set up. We have a bunch of line items. When this goes before the budget or for the final budget, this is not approved by line item by line item. It's approved in final form, which is a summary of. This is a work, set of worksheets for you guys to understand what we have, what we spent, what we have spent, what we are spending and what we propose for the next year. Okay? The, the account number that followed by the account description begins at two oh five, which is advertising, duplicating and printing. There's no employees right now that we've, that we have. So that's, that's, so that whole area is for, first one is for employees. You'll see the first two columns, actually the first three columns are audited figures for the past three years. Now, we don't have this past year's audited figures in here yet. However, I went back and looked at we took our spreadsheets and our ledger analysis to get an idea of where we were. Okay? I didn't put that in because we will put in audited figures for it's over with. Our budget for this year is that middle column. And you'll see for advertising, duplicating and printing is three thousand. Two of the previous three years are advertising duplication and printing was nine sixty-four and then two eighties or twenty-eight fifty-six. Right now, at nine months, we are currently, we're at thirty-seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. I think we will finish the year at that, which is the, the second to the last column, at thirty-eight hundred because that is actually air nav and American marketing. We will not utilize American marketing again next year. And so we're keeping, that's therefore we're proposing that that fit, that line item stay at three grand. Air nav is about thirteen, I think it's between thirteen and fourteen hundred dollars a year. And we, it's probably got the best information. No one else seems that. I don't know. I've seen it, but they just don't seem to work as well as that one from what I'm looking at. Professional Technical Services, two-ten. We had fifteen hundred in there. Right now, we're fifteen eighty-six. The bulk of that, or not the bulk of that, but about three hundred and fifty of that, three hundred or so will be coming out and going to a different line item because it, it doesn't classify as being in that particular line item. It has been in the past, but we've moved it before. We're going to get it back in there. So we're looking at finishing the year at thirteen hundred and fifty dollars for that line item. And I'll continue it again at fifteen hundred for next year. Basically, that's paying for our fire extinguishers and all that. That's basically what that, that does. The next item is two-twenty or maintenance and repairs. You okay? You can see this? Okay. All right. Okay. This year, we budgeted twenty thousand for maintenance and repairs. We're at twelve thousand. We expect, we're estimating. We don't know yet, but we're estimating eighteen thousand. The, that eighteen thousand is the two thousand we just spent having Rebel put on that water filtration system. So that still leaves us a little bit of money. I mean, we, I'm not holding us to the eighteen, but that's what I'm projecting. We could go up to the twenty, but I, I don't see it at this point. Next year, I'm going to move it up to twenty-five just to be careful. We are looking at possibly having to paint the beacon, the tower beacon. Utilities. Utilities have stayed flat for a while, but they took a jump this year. They've actually increased their their costs. So we're actually going to spend about eight thousand. That's what we budgeted. We're at fifty-three sixteen now. And I expect it to be right at just close to eight thousand. It may be not, just a few cents over. I am going to up that budget to eighty-five hundred for next year. Communication and postage, that is our internet. That's Windstream. It used to be Windstream and AT&T, but now we just doing, we're doing everything, not Windstream, I'm sorry, MediaCom. It's MediaCom and it was AT&T, but we've actually moved it back where MediaCom handles it all. And so that cost is going to be about thirty-six hundred a year since AT&T's come out of it, but I will keep it at five just in case we have some miscellaneous or something else comes up. Speaking of which, Ver Tower. The Ver Tower operations, you said, you know, they are at state cost. They're putting in a new booster or a new internet booster or something. They're putting in for our Ver Tower system. And they're doing that to about four different airports across the state with estate funds because they are not getting good service through the internet service provider. So this will, this will, should help it and keep, get our numbers more accurate. There's too many times when we have to go back and reset because it just lost signal. I mean, and then other times it just is just gone. So MediaCom, not that they're not a good service, but that is a very remote site in their area and they don't like running cable that far. They especially don't like burying cable.
No.
They're real fond of just laying it on the ground.
And that, that's.
I'm so glad, no, we buried it over there at the airport because I was waiting, I was waiting for somebody to trip and send us a little legal notice.
But right now, the Ver Tower is, is.
But right now, the vertile is, is important because it's, the more traffic we get, the more they're going to spend.
We may ask, I don't know if we did or not, Kerry, we actually had the military call and ask if they, if their car would work in our. Uh, uh, fuel system. We did, and it does, or should.
Yeah.
Uh, so they, you know, we may start doing some more military, we may do some military sales.
But in the past, they just always wanted.
They want that signature, but they're changing things up, so apparently. Uh, but anyway, back to maintenance repair, we're going twenty-five thousand, utilities up to eighty-five hundred, communication and postage. Uh, like I said, that's, that's generally the internet. Uh, so that's five thousand on it. If we need some more. We've got it if something else comes up with that. Other contracts and services, that is going to be your serve-all and your mowing. Uh, this year, we had forty thousand in there. Uh, we're at twenty-seven one seventy currently. I expect with thirteen more mowings. At the price that we're paying right now would move that up to forty-three thousand five hundred. I jumped this up to fifty thousand because I'm, I'm getting tired at the end of every year because of that price change in April. We get behind. I mean, uh, we had thirty thousand in for this past year and we spent thirty-two thousand. So it's just, it's like that. It just kind of nipples away with that. I will say that the airport budget has been, has not, not been, or has not been problematic. Since its inception, it's always been, we've always had a decent budget and we're good with the expenditures. And then we've also gotten a lot of benefit from the state grants and federal grants as far as reimbursement on some of that stuff. In case you don't know, we purchase the fuel. We get the revenues off the fuel. We're blessed that on the hangars, I've already gone over that, we get the revenues off the hangars. So, but we also pay for the hangars excluding the base. So now, at the end of our term, which is a fifty-year term, thirty plus two-ten's. That will revert back, they'll be paid off, but that will revert back to the state. They will actually maintain final ownership. But we will have had it in the long term and receive money on that, so. We're making, the, the hangars we've got right now, they'll make about seventy-five hundred a year. Based on what we receive versus what we, what the payout is, we, we make about seventy-five hundred a year. Over twenty, and we'll do that over a twenty-five year period. Uh, three, three forty, motor fuel and lubricant. Again, this is the proprietary portion of it. Um, we budget fifty. Sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less, depending on how the schedule falls, but we always budget fifty on that one. Uh, because we're going to get money back from it. Uh, I think, right now, if I remembered right, we had. You've got, it was. We had spent so far, year-to-date, thirty-four thousand on fuel and have sold fifty-three thousand five. So that's, that's how that's running. Other materials and supplies, just miscellaneous kind of stuff. So it may be stuff we get from graphics, cleaning supplies, stuff like that. That's five hundred on that. We're actually looking at, I always say we'll use the five hundred. We don't, but we will get close sometimes. Um, and actually, we've actually gone over it after the, one of the, one of the first years, we had six hundred nineteen. And then followed up by a drop down to two-twenty as it regu, as it's kind of straight and smoothed out. Dues and subscriptions. That right there basically has been dues that we pay for memberships. Your membership could be two-twenty-five to, if you want to be part of KAA. Your membership is two hundred and twenty-five dollars. You want to be, you let us know. Uh, if you're, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll pay for that if you want to be part of it. The city and mine is paid for with this, with the other one. Um, and I've got twenty-five hundred dollars in there for that purpose for this coming year. We had five thousand, we're not going to spend five thousand, we're going to spend twenty-five hundred. So I've dropped it back down, cut it down some. Um, the hanger, those fees are set up. All the fees we have there are set up by the schedule of the loan. So they are as they are. There's no, that's no real, no real fluctuation on it. And as we go along, those, those fees and stuff will go up depending on the year we're in. But again, we set back everything that's a profit. We set it back into one pot. It is touched by no one other than if we had issues with the hangars themselves to fix. Down to last, that's the twenty thousand. I was hoping that you guys would do as we're going to do and do the buy-in. For the, for the membership on KAA, so that's what that is. Uh, the last one for the budget is in the five hundreds. And we've got six thousand dollars right now for office equipment for the airport. Kerry is going to start working on, uh, we're going to look at. Two hospitals, it sounds crazy, two hospital sta, style chairs that will lay back into a sleeping position. Um, and then curtains or blinds for that, for the kitchen area. And then two small tables and chairs so you can go in there and use your, your laptop. Or if you want to take a nap, you'll be able to do that as well. So she's going to start looking for some of that stuff to go, to go in there. We don't have room for a table really in there to, and other stuff. But if they want quiet, this is where they can go to do that. So we're going to work on that. You try to use that six thousand to cover those expenses. Next year, I, I'd like to put in four thousand. And we may see about putting in some sort of a little meeting room table for the. It's not in the air, the lounge area, but it would be in the area there where you're actually looking at the airport or the runway. In that area, put in a small meeting table or, because I've had a lot of people go out there and sit and have meetings. They'll fly in, have meetings, this will give them the opportunity to have that, so.
About there where the soda machines are.
Yeah. And that, that did not work well. No, everything got stale before people would buy it, so. I'm sorry, but they just, you know, there's no way to maintain that like that, so. That being said, we are proposing a budget, we'll be proposing, if this is, if you guys approve this, we'll be proposing, I'll get it out in a minute. Hey, say that for me, propose, proposing, I don't like, oh, I've done that too many times. That will have a budget submission of two thou, two hundred and four thousand four hundred dollars. To the council. Of that, one hundred thousand will be operational costs. As, as I have presented it to you, one hundred thousand dollars of it is operational costs and completely refundable. By the, the biennial grant. And the rest of it would be either from grants, from. Uh, fuel sales or from hangar sales, hangar ramp, so. Any questions? Hats off to Kerry. She's been scrambling all day thanks to me. So. I think, now, I will say the big projects that you hear or you think about, again, these items like the hanger, like the. The fencing and stuff like that, those are going to be capital improvement projects, but they're also being covered not necessarily by us, but by other things. If the hanger goes through, that's coming through our BIL money. So that's not, until we know for sure that that's going through, we're not including that in the, in the, in the budget. The one forty-nine on, on the other, we're not, again, we're not putting that in there until we're sure it's going to go. I mean, they've got, the state's got to come up with that. I'm not really sure why we're even. Pass through on the money for this one, because again, the airport, just so you're aware of it. The airport is property and State Park is property of the Kentucky Finance Cabinet. The Parks Department has a long-term lease on that property from the Finance Cabinet, shake me from wrong. KDA provides, um, consulting work and recommendations for the airport. The city of Calvert is, has a lease and we do the, we manage and operate its day-to-day operations. So it's kind of strange setup, but believe it or not, in the end, it's working. Uh, it does take a lot to get through the system to get a, get a finally yes. Because you have to have a yes from Joe, Billy and Bob. All of them have to say yes before you can move forward, so. Uh, but it is working and the airport is looking good. It's doing well. Um, we get these other eight hanger, AT hanger units in. That's going to put us up to twenty-nine aircraft base there. I have currently nine individuals with aircraft. Not pending, but with aircraft, and they are pending, waiting for us to build this other hanger. Not to mention, I've got that many more that are waiting for a hanger so they can buy aircraft. And I, I, I've told myself, I'm sorry, I've got to take the aircraft first. You know, I've, I've had. Someone say, I, I'm going to get an aircraft, but I'm, it's pending, I, and it's two years down the road, it's still pending. Or they've moved on. So if they've got an aircraft, we'll talk. I'll put them on the list. They immediately go to the head of the list. Locals move up above those coming in from outside. I don't have that many coming in. I got two from, on that list, everybody that's on that list actually could get a hanger probably. The only problem, one of them is too big. I don't have anything for that individual, but at this point in time. Economically, it's not feasible to bring in, do a box hanger when we need the numbers.
Right.
The, the higher the number we've got, the better off we're going to be. And the closer we're going to be to having somebody that can operate it on, as, on full-time FBO. So that's one of the reasons why back, we changed it from the box hanger we were talking about over to this, because. It's just, it will work toward our advantage down the road. So. And I'll shut up.
Oh, I think it's, it's done really, really well, you know, I, when, you know, back when this all started, you know. I didn't know this thing would really go through, but it's, it surprised me. Lot of interest there. If I got anything else?
I have nothing else at this time. If you all are, are comfortable with the proposed budget, the draft budget. Um, if you can get a consensus that you, you would recommend this to the council. Then Dennis and you and I can set this up, get it through here, and we can set it up and put it in the budget and, and approach the council at, at budget workshop.
Like, somebody make a motion to present it?
Motion to present?
A second.
All in favor?
All I ask is, you're all welcome to come to the budget workshops. If I have a quorum, I'll have to do a special call meeting for this board. So if you're thinking about coming, let Dennis or I know so we can make sure we don't have a quorum and run into that situation. Um, anything, what we had, two, three, seven members? So as long as I've got three or less, three or less, then we don't have to worry about a special call. But if I've got four members coming, then I'll have to do a special call. Anytime you have a majority of your board in one place. Oh yeah, that's a meeting. Ain't no way in the devil they're not going to talk about business. So yeah, that's, that's a state, that's, that's an open records and open meetings law, so. Let's see, what else we had on, on the agenda, anything? Got the draft budget buy-in on? Do you guys have anything I need to follow up on?
Tell you one thing, oh, uh, the, you know, that they've got up there. I, I wonder if they get any aircraft or traffic.
You mean over to. I don't know if, I don't know if he gets much in that way or not. I can find out.
Might be worth asking.
Yeah, next time, next time you have a meeting or I'll give him a call and just find out.
Yeah, I, I, I would dare to say that you're going to get some traffic and, and that.
I think so.
So we'll see.
So. Make a motion to adjourn?
If I could get those drawings back, I'd appreciate it.
You got, I was going to, in June, we had a tri, tri motor coming to May.